Good evening and welcome to the October 21st, 2024, meeting of the Rochester Hills City Council. We are going to call this meeting to order. If there is any members of the public who wish to speak on an item that is on the agenda or any item that is not on the agenda, please pick up one of the blue comment cards in the back of the room, fill it out, and hand it to Ms. Shipway here, and she will make sure that we call upon you at the appropriate time on the agenda. Please be advised that public comment is limited to three minutes. Ms. Shipway, if you would please take the role.
Thank you, Vice President Walker. President Deal.
He's excused prior notice.
Vice President Walker.
Here.
Mr. Blair.
Here.
Mr. Carlock.
Here.
Ms. Moreland.
Here.
Ms. Mongioli.
Here.
Ms. Newbauer.
Here.
Vice President Walker, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. If you would now please rise and join our youth council representative as they lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to ask you to keep your phones on silence. I would like you to keep Mayor Barnett and his family in your thoughts and your prayers as they mourn the loss of his mother, Judy Barnett Langford, who passed away this past week. Our deepest condolences to the mayor and his family. Thank you. So moving on to approval of agenda, I have not been made aware of any requests to modify or alter the agenda in any way. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Newbauer with a second from Ms. Moreland. So we have a motion by Ms. Newbauer and a second by Ms. Moreland to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. This evening, we have Sofia Olvera representing the government youth council. Sofia?
Okay. Good evening to President Deal and Mayor Barnett, council members and citizens of Rochester Hills. My name is Sofia Olvera, and I'm a 12th grader at Rochester Adams High School. I have served on Rochester Hills City Youth Gov Council for these past few months as it's my first year, and I serve on the Human Resources Technical Review Committee. This past month, the youth councils had our monthly meeting where we learned about the proposed scenarios for an updated master plan presented by the Planning Commission. We also planned the upcoming events of the month. As the month's now approaching, Rochester Hills City Youth Gov Council has participated in the following events: the Rochester Hills Strong Event Bike Show, the Fire Open House, the Community Tailgate Party, the Pumpkin Fest Lighting, and the Fall Festival. We have the upcoming Village Tree Lighting on November 22nd, and we have upcoming events in January and February such as mental health awareness events and library study sessions for exam season, where we will provide tutors and refreshments. These events would help with our outreach to the youth community of Rochester Hills. This month, we want to plan and finalize dates and locations for the upcoming events. We also want to spread more awareness by visiting middle schools and high schools and encouraging students to apply for the next year to serve on Rochester Hills City Youth Gov Council. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, November 13th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Olvera. And it doesn't look like we have any other council committee reports this evening, so we'll move on to presentations. Oops, sorry, a late arrival. Ms. Moreland.
Thank you, Vice President Walker. Sorry, I was a little tardy with that. I don't know if you can share my screen, and I'm hoping this comes out okay. It's not showing up too well. But this was for the Pumpkin Fest at the museum this past couple weeks ago, and had a beautiful day. It was a wonderful event. And as you can see, all of the fun Halloween things that they had, and we did have some families that turned out and enjoyed themselves. And then there were games there next to the house there. So it was a really fun event, lots of pumpkins. I was not able to get a photo of the pumpkins when they were lit, but there was a ton of pumpkins on the stone wall. So it was a great event. And the masquerade ball, I understand, was fabulous. I unfortunately was not able to attend as I was at my son's wedding. So keep looking to the museum because there's many more events coming up. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Moreland. All right, now on to our presentation section of the agenda. This evening, we have two presentations scheduled, and we'll begin with item 2024-0465, the Presentation of the Deer Management Advisory Committee 2024 Report. With us this evening, we have Deborah Barno, DMAC Chairperson, and Matt Einhauser, our Natural Resources Manager. Welcome.
Thank you, Vice President Walker, city council members, and Mr. Elbert. I'm here with Deb Barno, our Chair of our Deer Management Advisory Committee, who's going to update you on some of the past data over the last year and our recommendations.
Good evening, Vice President Walker and Council, and Mr. Elbert. We have a couple new members on Council this year, so hopefully we can enlighten you. If you have any questions about some of the things that we've done or some of the acronyms or anything we may use, just let us know. As far as our report this year, things have not really changed a whole lot from last year to this year. Couple of things that have gone up, which we were anticipated, which are the deer count has gone up slightly, and our deer vehicle accidents have gone up slightly. Wait till Matt gets a... Here we go. All right, got the next one. Which we really expected because as the council, maybe not the new members, but we were dealing with the EHD breakout, where we did lose a lot of deer. I think we lost over 100 deer in the city, the Parks and National Resources Department have calculated. So our numbers have been trending downward a little bit, but not unexpected. They are trending slightly upward. So if we look at the first slide that we have up there, we're looking at the deer vehicle collisions for this past year, the past that would be October through December of 2023, and our total was 123 DVCs that were reported. If you look at prior years, 2022, we had 102, 2021, we had 120, and then two preceding years, we were at around a little over 150 both years. So we're trending downward, and we're up slightly this year, but still not, you know, not really a lot of concern over those numbers as of yet. Next slide. If you look, we look at the deer vehicle collisions by month, and not unexpectedly, we know that deer are in their rut season right now, and so October, November, December, we know that those are the main months where they're running around and mating. So not unexpectedly, of that 123 that we did record last year, 78 occurred in the time period from October through December. When we look at the severity of collisions, we did have a couple that were reported where there was a level three suspected minor injury, but very good news again of the majority that were reported. We had no fatalities and we had no significant injuries reported. Locations, we track this every year, and not unexpectedly, our hotspots are not unexpected, they're really the same, but we have hotspots along Tinkin', Walton Boulevard, Avon Road, Livernoy, and John R. And so where you will see part of our continuing recommendations, you will see those signs out just passing tonight, coming here tonight. I saw one coming northbound on, or I'm not sure, eastbound on, westbound on Avon Road. So those are our hotspots, and that's where we target all of our signage, the six movable changeable signs that we put out every year. As far as the aerial, last year, we were unable to get an aerial because the weather conditions were not conducive. We have to have a certain amount of snowfall, and we didn't get, those conditions weren't optimal in 2023. So we look at the last year that we had the count, which is 112, which again is that year going in. We knew 2022, 2023, we're still looking at the effects of the EHD breakout, and not unexpectedly, this last January when that was conducted, our deer count was up to 152. But still, if you look at the trend and you look at some of the higher numbers, you know, 2019, 2020, 2021, we were up in the, you know, 300 and 400 range, so we're half of that right now. So not that that won't change in the coming years as we kind of rebound from the EHD, but certainly we're still in a, we're relatively comfortable position in terms of population. Complaints overall, the Parks and National Resources Department tracks all the complaints. And if you look at the data from 2023, all of the complaints were down this past year: feeding the deer, nuisance claims, roadkill, you know, in the various categories, local, major road, on a MDOT or Oakland County Road Commission road, or private property. All those complaints were down this year. As far as the recommendations, they're very similar. The committee really didn't put any new type of recommendations forth. We have continued outreach in the community, which I think is a very important thing, and I think it really does get a lot of our information out. We do it in the fall so that people can know. There was an article in one of our local papers, can't remember which one already, that talks about, you know, bringing heightened people's awareness to deer, just the deer and what's going on with the deer this time of year. So we do that in the spring. You know, we also look, we put out a lot of information about deer because all the does are having their fawns, and it's not uncommon for people to see a fawn drop somewhere that may be unusual. What do you do with that? And so we put a lot of, I think, good communication and information out in the public so that the public has that. And we also have our deer brochures, which our committee put together in the past few years, which we do include with water bills every other year. They did go out this past spring with the water bills, so every other year, so the next time they'll go out will be 2026, spring of 2026. So everybody's got that information out there, and of course, all that information is available right at the Parks and Natural Resources Desk as well. We do our annual spring gardening with deer conjunction with Bordeines, which is a popular event. I think a lot of people take away a lot of good information from that, and every year, it's very helpful. The Bordeine people are extremely knowledgeable about plants, and every year, there's usually some type of new product that comes out that can help with deer deterrence. And of course, we also have Lance, and Lance DeVoe and Lauren from the Parks and National Resources Department that come out and they do their portion and talk about deer behavior. So it's a well-attended event, and we'll intend to continue it next spring. Also continuing, same recommendation, we continue to have the six changeable message boards in our high DVC areas. And again, as I stated, the placement of those is really tracked where we're seeing those high DVC numbers based on our mapping. A new initiative that we put through this past year and will continue is we wanted to put out some outreach to new or student drivers. Those are the ones that are primarily driving at dawn and dusk, when they're driving to school in the morning, or perhaps they've got after-school activities, and they are driving at dusk. So Parks and National Resources Department, Matt, contacted the RCS administration to see how, what is the best way to put forth that information. They suggested that it would be best to put it in a newsletter. So it's my understanding that that information went out to RCS students through that and parents through that newsletter, which went out this month. And our last suggestion is continue the aerial deer count survey in January 2025, and we'll have to see if the weather's conducive, but assuming that it is, we'll do that, and we'll see where we stand next year in terms of our deer aerial count. So that's all I have for the presentation this evening. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Just some thank yous. I want to thank all the members of the committee for their time and their effort, you know, and coming to the meeting and putting forth these things. Also want to thank the Parks and National Resources Department, Ken, Matt is an invaluable resource to us, and Lance and Lauren are invaluable resources as well. So with that, I will turn it over if you have any questions.
Thank you. The recommendation is for city council to review, receive, and file the presentation data, so really no further action is necessary. But it does look like we have a question from council, so I'll give it to Ms. Mongioli.
Vice President Walker, it's not a question, it's a comment and a thank you to Ms. Barno, also to the Parks and Natural Resources Committee for staff, for all the work that they do. As Deb has mentioned, both Lance, Lauren, and Matt are invaluable resources to us, and Mr. Walker served on the committee with me as well this year. It is nice to see a continuing committee because the educational process isn't quite as lengthy when you have new members, but also it gives us a chance to start brainstorming new ideas. So, Ms. Olvera, if there's a chance that we could get word through the Youth Government Council about the deer challenges, and it's not just new drivers, but all high school drivers, to make sure that they're aware of those nasty deer that are out there at this time of year. And you're right, Deb, the signs are out on the street telling everybody it's a deer crash area. They will be moved, so you'll get to notify that on the different places. But thank you very much for all your leadership.
Yeah, my pleasure.
On this committee.
So it looks like all the questions or comments. Thank you very much, Ms. Barno and Ms. Einhauser.
Thank you.
Next up, we have item 2024-0466, the Green Space Advisory Board 2024 Status Report. Joining us this evening are Heidi Morris, GSAB member, and Matt Einhauser, our Natural Resource Manager. Welcome.
Thank you, Vice President Walker, city council members, Ken Elbert, Mr. Elbert, sorry, boss. I'm here with Heidi Morris. She's stepping in for our Chair of our Green Space Advisory Board, and she has been a longtime member of the Green Space Advisory Committee, and she will be helping me with the presentation. So I'll hand it to her.
All right. Thank you, Council and Mr. Elbert, for giving us this opportunity to update you. We don't have a lot of updates this year, but any updates we have generally in green space are good. So you'll see the map above, and it shows you where all of our current green space parcels are located throughout the city. We currently have eight that is amassing 142 acres, which every year, it seems like we get to add a little bit more, which is amazing for our city. We have Clear Creek in the northern portion of the city, Rivercrest, Harding, Cloverport, and Childress in the center of the city that are all going to be along the Clinton River. Our largest, Innovation Hills Green Space, which will now have access with the site to Innovation Hills Park via the bridge, will be a very exciting way to expose maybe some people in the city that don't have the knowledge of these special spaces that we have. So that's a very exciting thing for us. We have Ruby Green Space in the southern part of the city, which was recently expanded at the end of 2023 to include another four acres with the purchase of the parcel along Livernoy, which will be more visible from the road site for the city as well. We have a newer green space that was acquired a couple years back, Auburn Green Space, which is going to be towards the southwest portion of the city. And our board makes a point to keep an eye on all these properties as one of our goals, and we kind of adopt properties. And if one of us is visiting one of them, and we come back to council, or council, I apologize, our board, we will go ahead and share any updates that we've seen. But we really encourage you and all people in the community to explore these spaces, to see the beauty that they have. So you'll see up there in the picture, we do really like to try and brainstorm ideas of how we can engage the public. We know that people in our city want more green space. They want to see it preserved and maintained. So one of the ways we've done that is through volunteer garlic mustard pool. We've had cleanups in the past. This year, we had a table at the Oak and the Hills where we were able to talk to people, kind of as a way coming by to, we kind of took part with a bike giveaway at the event, and so we were able to share about green space. A lot of people still don't know that we have these permanently preserved spaces. So we really want to at least engage with them so that they know these are places they can explore, but that they will never be developed. And that is the key wonderful takeaway that our city has done. We also have done a native plant giveaway, and with the, at Bloomer at the end of September, we worked with Oakland County to also have an invasive species group. And also, our Natural Resources Division continues to provide a monthly e-newsletter called Notes from Nature, and that covers all natural resources and highlights some of the things that we're doing. And so I'm going to hand it over to Matt to talk about stewardship and monitoring.
So every year, we work with our contractor, which currently is StanTech, to develop a plan that we present to our Green Space Advisory Board at the beginning of the year of what projects we're going to do for each property to kind of keep them in line. So we have these little pods of high-quality natural areas in our city, and it's important that we keep up on managing those properties, and that's an annual thing. So early on, we got to tackle things in a more aggressive way to get rid of a lot of invasives, and we're finding ourselves now doing a lot of the follow-up treatments and continual management. Now, there are still some areas that we need to go in there and use the more aggressive approaches, but a lot of the acreage now, we're using techniques like prescribed burning and just follow-up treatments to maintain that high-quality habitat. And so this past year, we did some prescribed burning at Harding Green Space, also out front here at Avon Prairie. And then we look at other projects that we can use. Some of this is funded through our stewardship fund, our general fund as well. So like, we worked with the museum to reestablish some native bioswales that go down into the Stony Creek. So we're always looking at other natural features management that we can do throughout the city beyond just our green spaces and applying the techniques and things that we learn on our green spaces to our parks and other city-owned properties. One thing that was a little bit different that we, since our last presentation to you all, was we received comprehensive monitoring that was done at the end of last year through our contractor, and we look to do this every couple years or so to just kind of get a snapshot of where we're at with things. So Innovation Hills Green Space, they looked at a measurement that's floristic quality, which is, takes into account diversity of species, the amount of high-quality native species, and then just the general quality of the vegetation that is there. And so Innovation Hills received an exceptional score, the highest score. Over 213 native plants were found on that site. Eighty percent of them, or 213 plants were found on the site, eighty percent of them being native plants to the area. Ruby, Clear Creek, and Cloverport/Childress all had high floristic qualities. And so each site, they looked over 100 different monitoring points. So this was really in-depth monitoring compared to what we've done in the past. Harding was moderate, so it kind of fell in between low and good, which was somewhat surprising because that is a pretty high-quality space, but it did have the second-most diverse vegetation next to Innovation Hills. So there's a lot of acreage out there, and there's a lot of plants. Just, there is still quite a bit of invasives and non-natives out there that brought that score down, so there's more work to be done there. Auburn and Rivercrest were our lowest-quality spaces right now, which was not surprising. Auburn, when we got that property, we kind of knew that it was inundated with fragmites and buckthorn, and we very quickly started doing the treatments out there, and we're going to turn it around and make it a really high-quality wetland. So just some photos we wanted to share of some of our spaces out there. The bottom, or the top-left one is our Ruby Green Space, and we have some pictures from Harding and Avon Prairie on the top, and then Clear Creek and Innovation Hills, and then the one on the bottom right is Cloverport along the river there. And speaking of Cloverport, I wanted to take this time to just give a quick update on our Cloverport Stream Bank Stabilization Project, which was a project identified with our contractor early on when we first obtained that green space as a stewardship project. We did, as you know, have, receive a grant to work on this, this stream bank, and we're looking at other possible grants to help with potential cost increases that we're seeing because of the extent of the erosion there. And the site presents some challenges because it's off of Cloverport Road, which is a smaller dirt road with limited access into the space. So it's a really steep bank. So we're finding some more and more challenges and trying to work with different, the DNR and Eagle, to look at the different options that we have moving forward with that project. So with that, thank you for your time, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for that presentation. The recommendation again is that the city council just simply review, receive, and file the presentation, so no further action is necessary. But it looks like we do have a question or a comment from one of the council members, Mr. Carlock.
Thank you, Vice President Walker. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Morris, Mr. Einhauser. As the new person on the committee, I stepped into a group of people that are really passionate about these green spaces, and it's kind of a breath of fresh air. One of the things that I, as a council person, and I'm sure my peers have heard, is there's a lot of development taking place in the city. Citizens need to understand that the way this trust was set up, once the city buys a green space property, it can never be sold, it can never be developed. These are green spaces for perpetuity, and we have to be good stewards of these spaces, which, you know, it's going to cost us some money over time. You mentioned Innovation Hills. At the last council meeting, we got a picture. The bridge is almost done. I'm hoping Mr. Elbert will give us a little bit of an update during the mayor's minute that he'll be sharing with us. I'm going to take a second and challenge all of the residents of Rochester Hills. I had done some quick math before, and it's on the slides here. We have 142 acres of protected green space in the city, eight different areas. Get out and look at these. Walk around. There are trails in some of them. They're not well-marked, but they are there. And help with some of these volunteer opportunities, the garlic mustard pool cleanups that we do. Reach out to the Green Space Committee, to the members, come to some of the meetings, see how you can help keep these green spaces high-quality. Again, thank you for, you know, all of the members of the committee, Mr. Einhauser and Mr. Elbert, for, you know, helping keep Matt in line. Back to you, Vice President Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Carlock, and thank you, Ms. Morris and Mr. Einhauser. Keep up the good work. Appreciate it. Moving on to public hearings. We have three items for public hearings this evening, and we'll start off with item 2024-0457, the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program for Reprogramming, Program Year 2022 and Program for reprogramming program year 2022 and program year 2023. And for this item, I'll ask Ms. Morlin and Mr. Walker to recuse themselves. You can stay at the dais, though, Ms. Morlin. And this evening, we have Denise McDonald with our fiscal division. Ms. McDonald?
Good evening, Vice President Walker, City Council, and Mr. Elworth. I am here tonight to discuss reprogramming program years 22 and 23 of the Community Development Block Grant funds from the Yard Services Snow Removal Program to the Minor Home Repair Program. The grant funds are passed down from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in Oakland County. As part of the reprogramming process, we must hold a public hearing, and the governing body must pass a resolution to approve the planned use of funds. I am requesting that we reprogram $10,703 of program year 22 and $15,000 of program year 23 federal community development block grant funds from Public Services Yard Services to Minor Home Repair. The purpose of this reprogramming request is to ensure the on-spent Public Services Yard Services funds are reprogrammed and spent timely to not risk Oakland County or HUD recapturing them. With less snowfall over the past few winters and receiving the OSHA chore grant, the CDBG program has some on-spent funds. Reallocating these to the Minor Home Repair Program will benefit approximately five to seven additional residents in the program. At this time, I will request that you open the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. And with that, I will open the public hearing. Is there an appropriate amount of time? You have to count to 10, Mississippi? And with that, I will close the public hearing, seeing no public wishing to make a comment. We do have questions from council, though. I would call on Ms. Monjioli.
Thank you, Vice President Walker. CDBG was one of the first things when I got on council that I had questions about, so I'm always interested to see this report when it comes back to us. The only question I had was, why not snow? But you've answered that question here. So I appreciate all the work that goes into this and finding the other grants. Do we ever have a shortage of funding to help seniors in our community that may need those minor home repairs?
Well, there's always a need throughout the community. With the additional ARPA funds that we received the past few years, that's greatly helped, I guess, supplement the minor home repair program, so we're doing really well at the moment. But right now, all of our funding is allocated. Thankfully, the next program year will start soon, so we're in good shape right now. But every year, the waitlist grows, and the ARPA funds have now been spent.
Right. I just know that on a number of our community Facebook groups, there's always somebody who's looking for help fixing stairs, picking up, getting leaves, mowing lawns, that type of work. And sometimes, it becomes more costly, home repairs. So I just want to make sure, do I send them your way?
Oh, yeah. You can always send them my way. I'm happy to call or email or discuss anything with them.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And with that, Vice President Walker, I move the resolution in our packet.
Thank you, Ms. Monjioli. With a second by Ms. Newbauer. We have a motion and a second. We have no further questions or public comment on this item. We have a motion by Ms. Monjioli and a second by Ms. Newbauer. I'll read the resolution into the record, and Walker and Morlin will recuse themselves from voting. Resolve that the City of Rochester Hills CDBG request for reprogramming is hereby authorized to be submitted to Oakland County for approval, and that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute all documents, agreements, or contracts which result from this request for reprogramming to Oakland County. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And that passes unanimously with Walker and Morlin recusing themselves. Next up, 2024-0458, again, the Community Development Block Grant 2025 application, with us still is Denise McDonald. And again, Walker and Morlin will recuse themselves.
Good evening again. I am now going to discuss program year 2025 funding for the Community Development Block Grant Program for the City of Rochester Hills. As part of the application process, communities must hold a public hearing, and the governing body must pass a resolution to approve the planned use of funds. The planning allocation for program year 25 from Oakland County, which passes down funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, is 151,624. Administration is recommending the following allocations to programs: $15,000 to services for victims of domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, or stalking; $7,700 to yard services; and the remainder of 128,924 to minor home repair. In highlighting program year 23 funding, which is coming to a close, the $15,000 allocation to Haven went towards assisting over 100 individuals from Rochester Hills and the victims of domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, or the stalking program. Fifty-three senior residents were assisted with the snow removal services through the Yard Services Program. Thirty-four minor home repair projects were completed, averaging 3,200 per project. And 192 individuals were assisted through the closed closet at the neighborhood house using the subsistence payments, emergency services funding, as the last year of receiving the CDBG funds. At this time, I would request that you open the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. And with that, I will open the public hearing. And just that quick, we will close the public hearing, seeing no public wishing to make a comment. We do have a comment from council or a question, Ms. Monjioli.
Thank you. So, Vice President Walker, just for the audience that might be listening in, could you explain why you and Councilwoman Morlin are recusing yourself from the vote? Because there's no conflict of interest personally, so I just want to make sure the residents understand.
Ms. Morlin and I sit on the OPC Governing Board as members of that institution, and they are benefactors of the monies. So there's a bit of a conflict there. Therefore, we recuse ourselves from this vote.
Just want to make sure the public is aware. Thank you very much for that explanation.
My pleasure.
And with that, I move the resolution in our packet.
Thank you very much, Ms. Monjioli. And again, Ms. Newbauer, for a second. So we have a motion and a second. We have no further questions or public comment on this item. We have a motion by Ms. Monjioli and a second by Ms. Newbauer. I'll read the resolution into the record. Resolve that the City of Rochester Hills CDBG application is hereby authorized to be submitted to Oakland County for inclusion in Oakland County's annual action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute all documents, agreements, or contracts which result from this application to Oakland County. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And that passes unanimously with Walker and Morlin recusing themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Now, one more public hearing this evening. We have item 2024-0468, Fiscal Year 2024 Third Quarter Budget Amendment. And with us this evening is none other than our very own Chief Financial Officer, Joe Snyder. Mr. Snyder?
All right. Well, thank you, Vice President Walker, members of the city council, Mr. Elworth and Ms. Solera. Presented before you tonight are the City of Rochester Hills Fiscal Year 2024 Third Quarter Budget Amendments. And in this quarterly budget amendment, this is where we present the prior year or fiscal year 2023's budgeted to actual lookbacks or true-ups between funds. And in total, there is $1.2 million proposed to be credited back to various funds citywide. In total, the third quarter budget amendments presented before you tonight propose to increase total revenues by $812,000 and increase total expenditures by $2.4 million. This results in a net impact on fund balances of a $1.6 million draw from citywide fund balances. First, regarding the $812,000 increase in revenues, well, there is a $1.2 million decrease resulting from all the net lookbacks, and this is offset by a net increase of $1.6 million in transfers out, which have an offsetting transfer, transfers in, which have an offsetting transfer out on the expenditure side. And as well, there's a $264,000 insurance net asset distribution from our insurance carrier, MM RMA. Moving on to expenses, the, sorry, I've got a little frog in my throat here. The $2.4 million increase in total expenditures, operating expenditures are proposed to be reduced by $1 million, with the vast majority of that decrease being the lookback credits. And capital projects are proposed to increase by $1.8 million. Some of the most significant projects include the urgent sinkhole repair recently at Veterans' Memorial Point, the Borden Park batting cage improvements, the fire training tower, as well as proposed increases for the Oakland County Sheriff's Office substation upgrades and the citywide park entrance signs and gateway projects. Transfers out are proposed to increase by $1.6 million, and this is funding from the Capital Improvement Fund or Fire Capital Fund for projects and to comply with the city's fund balance policy. For example, in the Fire Operating Fund, they will receive a net true-up credit of $262,000 in the third quarter, which in turn is proposed to be transferred out to the Fire Capital Fund for future fire capital purchases. So without that, I'll ask for Vice President Walker to open a public hearing on the city's fiscal year 2024 Third Quarter Budget Amendment, and I'm available for any public or city council questions.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. And with that, I will open the public hearing. And now I will close the public hearing, seeing no comments from the public. And it does not look like we have any questions from council. Looking for a motion from Ms. Newbauer and a second from Ms. Morlin? So we have a motion and a second. We have no further questions or public comment on this item. We have a motion by Ms. Newbauer and a second by Ms. Morlin, and I'll read that into the record. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Rochester Hills City Council hereby approves the following fiscal year 2024 fund totals as amended in our packet. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you, Council.
See you in a bit.
So the next section of our agenda is public comment for items not on the agenda. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on the agenda. Any member of the public wishing to speak should submit a blue speaker request form to the clerk. Those forms are available in the back of the room. Each speaker is allowed a maximum of three minutes to address council. When you approach to speak, please provide your name and address. And it does look like we have one public comment from Matthew Drinkard. Mr. Drinkard, if you'd like to join us up at the podium. State your name and address, and we'll start the timer.
My name is Matthew Drinkard. My wife and I reside at 3375 Melvin Avenue, over in the fabulous Brooklyn Sub. And for those of you that had anything to do with the redoing of Auburn Road, thank you so much. It is, I drove through there today, brand-new buildings going up, they're rehabbing the old ones. I mean, things are happening. And I'm probably a little late to the party on this, but my wife and I were in town recently, and we stopped at Rochester Mills, imagine that. And right behind the mills, the Lions Club has built a band shell. It's about 15 by 30 feet. It's just a cement slab, and I thought it was so nice. We called the Lions Club. We said, well, what'd you pay for that? And they had the whole thing built for $75,000, which I thought, in this day and age, that's not bad. And I retired from General Motors Engineering about 11 years ago. And when I retired, I met a lot of guys my age that didn't know what to do with themselves. And so we found out there's this whole musical community where guys get together, and ladies, and everybody sings and plays. We meet at the big barn over on Dequinder Road right now. But we all meet each other at these free events, like in Rochester, and Sterling Heights has them, Utica has them, these band shells. And it's just packed with seniors that are sitting around in their lawn chairs, because seniors love free stuff. We just do. And I saw that, and we saw that little green space next to the water park over here. I said, boy, would that be ideal. Now, a few years ago, I took a position with a little Lutheran church over there, and the pastor loved to do studies. And he did a demographic study of the Brooklyn Sub and found just a huge number of a 55-and-up crowd. And I can attest that, like, on our street, I think there's, like, two little kids on the whole street. And, you know, you can put it in a park if you want. I mean, it's entirely up to you, and I'm sure it'll be wonderful. But I just wanted to submit this. Maybe I can give this to you. We don't need that. Just to pass it, if you have any idea what it is, it's one of those rough sawn metal-roofed... And just, I just wanted to put a bug in your ear about that and have you think it over, and if there's any chance of it going forward, I would sure appreciate it. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Drinkard. We'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If any council members or citizen requests a discussion on any item, it will be removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion. I have not been made aware of any request to move any agenda item. Looking for a motion to approve, Ms. Newbauer, with a second from Ms. Morlin. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Ms. Newbauer and a second by Ms. Morlin. I will read the consent items into the record. Item 2024-0467, Request for Purchase Authorization Parks. Contract blanket purchase order for preliminary engineering services for the Innovation Hills and Eagles Landing Stream Bank stabilization projects in the amount not to exceed $83,440 to Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan. Item 2024-0470, Request for Purchase Authorization DPS Engineering. Contract blanket purchase order for an as-needed professional services for the management, integration, upgrade, and repair for the city's SCADA system, including communications, in the amount not to exceed $60,000 through December 31, 2025, to Desima LLC, Dearborn, Michigan. And item 2024-0473, Request for Approval of a Fireworks Display Permit for Light the Village, November 22, 2024, to American Fireworks Company of Hudson, Ohio, applicant. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Moving on to legislative and administrative comments, we'll start with Ms. Monjioli.
Thank you very much, Vice President Walker. So I just wanted, as we're going into the election cycle, and two weeks from tomorrow, we will be finally done with it. The polls will be closing in 16 minutes from now, in two weeks and a day. So I do want to thank the clerks and her team for all the work that they're doing. But I also want to send a message out to our residents. A, you have been given a tremendous right to be able to vote, so please make sure you take advantage of that. Early voting starts this Thursday at the library, and it goes for, the 26th, and it goes for nine days up until that Sunday, so please take advantage of that. You don't want to get caught in a snowstorm or a driving rain like it was in the primary. Make sure you get out there and vote, and vote early. But I also want you to do your research on the candidates. All of us here on the dais have been involved in politics and probably know most, if not all, of the candidates that are on the ballot. Well, maybe some of the higher ones we don't know personally. But if you have questions about a candidate, and you see that negative campaign literature that comes out, or campaign messaging that's taking advantage of a community tragedy that's being used to their advantage, and you want to know more about why this individual is speaking out that way, please contact a council member. Talk to them. Ask them about who the candidate is and why they would make such accusations, so that this way, you're making an informed vote on November 5th or before. Because it's important to know who is going to be representing our community. We get a lot of help from our county commissioners, our state reps. The state senate's not on the ballot, but all of our elected officials help bring back grants and dollars to our community, and without them, we would be financially disadvantaged without their support. So please get to know your elected officials and the candidates that are running. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Ms. Newbauer?
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Walker. I just wanted to take a few seconds to acknowledge that we had kind of a rough week last week in Rochester Hills, or two weeks now, almost. And our first responders were challenged once again, and I just wanted to thank the first responders for their hard work and let our community know that we are a safe community and that we support our residents. And I said it before, when one of us is grieving, we're all grieving, so we're just going to keep loving our neighbors and praying for our neighbors and thanking our first responders for everything that they do.
Thank you, Ms. Newbauer. Next up, we have Mr. Blair.
Thank you very much, Vice President Walker. Wanted to share a couple updates from a week or so ago. Laurie, would you share my screen, please? I had the pleasure of attending the 2024 Michigan High School Athletic Association Junior High School, Middle School Cross-Country Regionals. And that is the junior varsity runners right there. That is the last of four two-mile races. And that's my daughter Abigail there, who did a great job. What was special about this event is it was at Bloomer Park. And it was a real pleasure to watch so many families and their young ones enjoy themselves. And I wanted to give a shout-out to these guys who made it all possible. This is Garrett and Rubin, and they marked out the two-mile trail, they made sure that the parking lots and everything was in order, and that Bloomer Park looked fantastic for thousands of guests. So thanks, guys. Ken, your team did a great job. Back to you, Vice President Walker. Back to you, Vice President Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Our clerk, Ms. Scott.
Hi, thank you, Vice President Walker. I just want to follow up on Ms. Mungjuli's comment. Early voting does start this Saturday, which is October 26th, and it runs through Sunday, November 3rd. The hours are 8:30 to 4:30 with November, oh my goodness, with Thursday being 12 to 8:00 p.m. And then, of course, all of our 32 precincts are open on Election Day, which is Tuesday, November 5th, and they will, the hours of operation or the polling hours are 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So we look forward to seeing everyone out and voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. And representing the mayor's office this evening, we have Mr. Elbert.
Good evening, Vice President Walker and City Council. I'm Ken Elbert, I'm the Director for Parks and Natural Resources, representing the city administration tonight, and Mayor Barnett and Nathan Mueller are both out with personal family issues. A couple of things I wanted to call a shout-out to both of our citizen presenters tonight for both GreenSpace and DMAC, the Deer Committee. You heard tonight that there wasn't a lot of change there, but the citizens really make those committees. And so they listed things that have been going on for several years that were citizen ideas, like the volunteer garlic mustard pool, or some of the things at GreenSpace. And with DMAC, that whole garden session with Bourdines was a citizen idea. So it's just great to have you here tonight and to sort of get that different energy vibe than staff from those committees, so thank you. Also, on Mr. Karlock's bridge request update, you'll be having something soon, but we don't have a final date yet. We're working with the mayor's office to court final dates, but it will be very, very soon as to when there'll be a grand opening. So with that, we had a few things happen this week, the last couple of weeks. The fire department held its annual open house on October 9th. Oh, could you, Laurie?
One step, we missed one step, Mr. Elbert. Whose screen are you sharing?
That's not what's on my screen. There you go.
That looks better. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So the fire department open house was recently, on October 9th. Per the usual, the place was packed, multiple departments helped just control the parking there. Hundreds of people came out to learn about a smoke detector safety, interact with our firefighters, watched live demonstrations, and so much more. It was an awesome experience. It seems to get better every year. It also gives us a few cute photos to share, like some of these. The Stonewall Pumpkin Festival, it was much better weather for the daytime portion this year, and so we'll just leave it in the hands of our video and Pat McKay.
Well, we're at the Stonewall Pumpkin Festival here at the Rochester Hills Museum at Band Museum Farming. We've been doing this event for more than 25 years. And it's a chance that looks a little bit at our agricultural works, but it brings a huge crowd to the Rochester Hills Museum, and it's this audience participation event where people plant pumpkins all day. We put them on our Stonewall, and we can light them, from 8:00 to 9:00. So it's a day-long activity. It supports not all of the museum, but in the evenings, we are able to generate some donations to help the Brooklyn's Black Cast shooting victims, so we're trying to turn this into a event that's really community-based. And it's scattered all over our site, we have the Patriot Center for the Arts, so nature preservation, and we have a professional carver going on, we have all kinds of carving tools, and it's just, it's just a event, it's just a perfect day out here. It's really a chance to showcase a beautiful historic site that's part of our park system in Rochester Hills. So we just want to let our community know that we can do these kinds of activities, and it's another reason why people should want to live and move and work and play in Rochester Hills.
So another event at the museum, once again. We held our employee fall festival last weekend at the museum, hosting nearly 150 employees and their families. They got to take hay rides around the museum grounds, enjoy some oars by fire, play games, take family photos, and enjoy each other's company. As you know, we value the culture that we've created here, and it's important for us to do these things, where we can bring our employees and families together. We also had our helper right here, who kept the hot dogs and hamburgers flowing right next to me the whole time, working with me as we were cooking with Mr. Visenko. The Rise Cup, we crowned Solvit as the winners of the first-ever Rise Cup last week. They're an IT solutions company in the community for almost 25 years. We need to give the biggest kudos to Pam Valenteck and our Planning and Economic Development Team for organizing this unique program and engaging almost 200 employees and 12 businesses here from Rochester Hills. I know many of you were here at the celebration, the excitement was very real with these companies. At the Sunrise Pinnacle Awards, it was a banner day for the city. At the annual Sunrise Pinnacle Awards, hosted by Rochester Regional Chamber of Commerce, Mayor Barnett was recognized with the Community Hero Award. Oakland County Sheriff's Captain Russ Yizer received the First Responder of the Year Award. And Dave Word received the Ra-Ra Recreation, from Ra-Ra Recreation, was given the Community Collaborator Award, so a great showing all around from a bunch of different team members. On the DPS update side, Adams Road Study Corridor, there's no change in the status of this project since the last update. All the information sharing in that events have been completed, and the public engagement summary will be published in the near future. Barclay Circle Rehab, excuse me, Barclay Circle Rehabilitation and Improvements, which is not that. Construction is now complete. Restoration and final cleanup will be completed in the spring of 2025. This is that. The GLWA 96-inch water transmission main relocation. So the good news, Dequinder Road between Hamlin and Avon Road is scheduled to reopen the traffic this Friday, October 25th. The bad news, starting on Monday, October 28th, Dequinder Road between 23 Mile and 24 Mile will be closed to continue with a second segment of Phase 2, the new detours shown here. Also, you'll see on this slide that the McCom orchard trail and Clinton River Trail will be detoured a little bit farther than the current detour via the 24 Mile Park Dale and Letica Drive because of the, sort of, the collapse that trail. It has to go a little bit farther because they'll be working in the route that they're currently rerouted to. And, let's see. Nope, that's a little bit more. So the work on the second segment, though, of Phase 2 includes open-cut installation of 2,000 linear feet, a 96-inch welded steel pipe, that's a pretty big pipe, transmission main into Quinder Road right away, from 23 Mile Road to the McCom Orchard Trail, south of 24. The third phase is coming in 2026 and to be completed in 2028. Any public inquiries should be directed to the public hotline number, which is 1-877-237-7311, or this email address of 96inch96, as in the numbers, 96inchwatermain@glc.org, and a project team number would respond. Per the weekly update provided by HRC, construction is coming to an end at the Leach Road paving, which is also not that. The first big, or the last big item left is the planting of new trees in the right away, so almost there, right? Signs just need to be placed, finishing touches like driveway restoration, water main valve adjustments, and cleanup. Restoration and final cleanup will be completed in spring of 2025, so in the next season. So Avon Industrial Drive, the paving is complete. Striping and restoration are the only items remaining to be completed. Restoration and final cleanup to be completed again in spring of 2025. Also, at siding next to the Clinton River Trail, Adams Road pedestrian crossing at Marketplace Circle, installation of the new pedestrian crossing of Adams Road, new signal poles, and the extension of the pedestrian pathways is well underway. The new pedestrian crossing and signal is planned to be operational by the first week of November, subject to DTEs, crews bringing power to the yet-to-be-installed poles. So pending DTE, it will be. And lastly, the water main replacement program at Judson and Bray Park Orchards, all the water mains have been replaced and in service, restoration is well underway. So lots of road projects going on, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Elbert. We do have one more comment from council, Ms. Moreland.
Thank you, President Deal. When I was first sworn into office, I came in with two single children. And two years ago, my daughter was married, and now we have the most recent M&amp;M team. If you would share my screen, I would like to introduce you to the new Mr. and Mrs. Moreland.
Oh, look at that.
And there they are.
Yes, indeed. Beautiful weekend for a wedding.
Vice President Walker.
Vice President Walker.
Right. I don't have to advertise a single son.
Exactly. Good for you, Ms. Moreland. Thank you very much. Moving on to attorney matters, Ms. Chris, do you have anything for us this evening?
I have nothing this evening.
Wonderful, thank you very much. So that moves us on to new business. Item 2024-0306, request for purchase authorization, fiscal increase to blanket purchase order for insurance coverage, general liability, motor vehicle, physical damage, property and crime coverage, pool contributions cost, legal defense and risk management consulting in the amount of $5,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $483,498 to Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, Livonia, Michigan. Mr. Snyder.
All right, well, thank you again, Vice President Walker, City Council, Mr. Elbert, and Ms. Overa. Presented before you tonight's request to increase the previously authorized 24 to 25 insurance renewal with, I'll just say call it MMRMA, a lot easier, in the previously in the amount of $478,000 to increase it by an additional $5,000 to a new not-to-exceed amount of $483,498. The city has been recently notified that its premium will be slightly higher, and this is due to a recently completed city property appraisal reevaluation compiled by the MMRMA. And this updated property appraisal reevaluation, it wasn't complete by the time the initial insurance renewal proposal was received. So due to increases in the city's building valuations and conditions, the MMRMA has issued an additional premium charge of basically $3,537 for the year. I'm proposing an increase of $5,000 just to cover anything else that might come up on the MMRMA side. So with that, I'm available for any public or city council questions.
Very good, thank you very much. We have no public comment on this item, and it doesn't look like we have any comments from council. We do have a motion by Mr. Karlock and a second by Mr. Blair. So we have a motion and a second. We have no further questions or public comments on this item. We have a motion by Mr. Karlock and a second by Mr. Blair, and I'll read the resolution into the record. Resolve that the City of Rochester Hills City Council hereby authorizes a blanket purchase order contribution to the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, MMRMA, of Livonia, Michigan, for general liability, motor vehicle, physical damage, property and crime coverage, pool contributions, stop-loss coverage, self-insured retention, fund replenishment, and risk management consulting in the amount not to exceed $478,498 for the period of July 1st, 2024 through July 1st, 2025. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item 2024-0469, request for authorization, purchase authorization, mayor's office, contract blanket purchase order for governmental representation and consulting services in the amount not to exceed $108,000 through November 30th, 2026, to Midwest Strategies Group of Michigan, Lansing, Michigan. I believe, Mr. Snyder, you're going to take this one.
I'll take this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
And presented before you tonight's request to exercise in an option for an additional two-year renewal for governmental representation and consulting services to Midwest Strategy Group in the amount not to exceed $108,000 for an additional two years through November 30 of 2026. Midwest Strategies has consistently advocated proactively on behalf of the city on legislative matters, funding opportunities, and any other issues as they relate to the city's unique governmental interests, and they have been our consultants since 2016. Midwest's interacted professionally with city staff, they're always extremely responsive to our needs, and the city has been satisfied with the services received. And as the mayor likes to say, if you're not at the table, then you're on the plate. So they help keep us there. So with that, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Very good, thank you very much. With no public comment on this item, we do have some questions or comments from council, and we'll start with Mr. Blair.
Thank you, Vice President Deal. Thank you, Joe. I just want to mention for the folks watching at home as we approve purchases and things, this is some of the best value-for-money the City of Rochester Hills could possibly receive. We get more out of these guys and girls that really brings money into our city. And I had a pretty unfavorable view of lobbyists when I started, but these are the real deal, so I move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Second by Ms. Moreland. So we have a motion and a second. We have no further questions or public comment on this item. We have a motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Ms. Moreland, and I'll read the resolution into the record. Resolve that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby authorizes a contract blanket purchase order for governmental representation and consulting services to Midwest Strategy Group of Michigan, Lansing, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed $108,000 through November 30th, 2026, and to further authorize the procurement manager to execute a contract amendment on behalf of the city. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Item 2024-0476, request for purchase authorization, DPS Engineering, contract blanket purchase order for services related to the assessment of the city's water distribution system, large valve release condition in the amount of $98,435 with a 10% project contingency in the amount of $9,843.50 for a total not to exceed project amount of $108,278.50, M.E. Simpson Co., Inc., Valparaiso, Indiana. That is not Mr. Fritz.
No. Hi. Good evening, Vice President Walker, City Council, and Mr. Elbert. Tracy Ballant with DPS Engineering. I will be obviously here representing us tonight on our two items. The water system large valve condition assessment is part of the drinking water asset management program that the city received from Eagle in 2021. We received over $700,000 in the grant, and this is one of the requirements of the grant, is to do a water system large valve condition assessment. We have approximately 57 valves between 16-inch and 24-inch. The work includes locating, identifying, clearing, performing inspections, and collecting all the condition of the valves, and giving the city back a detailed assessment. So with that, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Very good, thank you very much. With no public comment on this item, and it does not appear that we have any issues from council, we have a motion by Ms. Moreland and a second by Ms. Newbauer. We have a motion and a second. We have no further questions or public comment on this item. We have a motion by Ms. Moreland and a second by Ms. Newbauer, and I'll read this resolution into the record. Resolve that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby authorizes a contract purchase blanket purchase order for services related to the assessment of the city's water distribution system, large valve release condition to M.E. Simpson Co., Inc., Valparaiso, Indiana, in the amount of $98,435 with a 10% project contingency in the amount of $9,843.50 for a total not to exceed project amount of $108,278.50, and further authorizes the procurement manager to execute an agreement on behalf of the city. Further resolve that the city's acceptance of the proposal and the approval of the award of the contract shall be contingent and conditioned upon the party's entry into an execution of a written agreement acceptable to the city. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Item 2024-0477, request for purchase authorization, parks, contract blanket purchase order for the soil remediation project at 3001 West Auburn and 3514 South Liverney Road in the amount of $114,289.95 with a 10% project contingency in the amount of $11,428.99 for a total not to exceed amount of $125,718.94, CATSKILL remedial... Catskill Remedial Contracting, Inc., Brighton, Michigan. Is Mr. Elbert taking this one?
Yes.
From the dice.
Good evening, Vice President Walker, City Council. And we have with us also, for any detailed questions, I'm Matt Einhauser, the Natural Resources Manager on this project. But courtesy of the Eagle Restoration and Remediation Grant Project that Planning and Economic Development is working on, we're able to put this request in and essentially clean up the two green space properties mentioned here, both the Ruby Property and the Auburn Road parcel. And this would be removing over 1,000 tons of soil from those areas. And so with that, I will ask for any questions.
Very good, thank you very much.
It is the low bid also, I apologize, but yes, low bidder as well.
That's important.
Yes.
And we have no public comment on this item? And we have no questions from council? So we do have a motion by Ms. Newbauer and a second by Mr. Carlock. So we have a motion and a second, and we have no further questions or public comment on this item. We have a motion by Ms. Newbauer and a second by Mr. Carlock, and I will read that into the resolution. Resolve that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby authorizes a contract blanket purchase order for Soil Remediation Project at 3001 West Auburn and 3514 South Liverney Road to Catskill Remedial Contracting, Inc., Brighton, Michigan, in the Amount of $1,114,289.95 with a 10% Project Contingency in the Amount of $11,428.99 for a total not-to-exceed amount of $125,718.94. And further authorizes the procurement manager to execute an agreement on behalf of the city. Further resolve that the city's acceptance of the proposal and approval of the award of the contract shall be contingent and conditioned upon the party's entry into an execution of agreement acceptable to the city. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to 2024-0482, Request for Grant Acceptance, Parks Cloverport Park, Clinton River Buffer Acquisition, 694 South Rochester Road, Project Agreement. Mr. Elbert?
Good evening again, Vice President Walker, City Council. First, before we get started in this project, in this description just a little bit, I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Einhauser's work on this particular grant. And so he was a significant reason that we essentially scored well on this end property with its natural resource descriptions. And he really wrote half of the grant. And so I just want to say thanks to Matt as well before we get into this. And so what this is, and this was started in March, really, of 2023, I believe, yeah, that there's approximately 10 acres of land off Rochester Road adjacent to the Cloverport Green Space that City Council authorized us previously to put in a grant for essentially to cost share with the state of Michigan versus through the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. And they have accepted that, and a little bit slower than normal, but they finally got us the project agreement, which is sitting before you. And this requires essentially City Council to match 51%, in this case, $1,425,000. And they will give a grant of $1,328,000. And so with acceptance of this, we would proceed to the next steps, which would be then working with the landowner. And with luck, we will bring a request back to City Council in November. There are a few things in this that we have to get final, basically, review of the DNR to authorize final purchase of this property. So there is another step of this that will come to council on that. And one other thing I need to call out that you need to be aware of, of course, when we accept a grant, this is City Council acknowledging in perpetuity that this grant will be, or this property will be available only for outdoor recreation use, similar to the Pine Trace property that we have and several of our other properties. So as a condition of accepting this grant, we are telling them that we will keep it in outdoor recreation in perpetuity. So with that, ask any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Elbert. With no public comment, this has been a long time coming, though, and we have a seller, owner of the property that has hung in there, so to speak, for a long time, patiently waiting for monies to become available. So this is exciting. But that's one of the conditions from the seller is that we keep this and protect this as green space in perpetuity.
That is their desire as well, as the DNR's requirement if we accept the grant, yeah.
Okay, so it worked well.
Yes.
Meeting of the minds, so to speak, in the real estate world. Well, that's wonderful. We do have some questions or comments from council. We'll start with Ms. Bungiole.
Thank you very much, Vice President Walker. This has been a long time coming, and Mr. Elbert and your team have done a tremendous job making this possible. I know I get questions from the residents about, well, how come you can spend this much money? But it's because we're going to give it to the green space and protect this property forever. There will not be a large commercial endeavor being facing onto Rochester Road, but it'll be a park, an outdoor space for our residents to enjoy for decades, centuries to come because of what we're doing this evening. So thank you and your team for making this possible, for the work that you've done in guiding it through the state process. It's an expensive piece for the city to acquire, but we also want to make sure we're letting the residents know we are committed to preserving our property in this community. Too many times we hear that the city is just being overdeveloped, but this is one time where we're putting our money, where our mouth is when we say we are preserving our green space in our community and not just everything is being developed. We are preventing development being taken on Rochester Road, which is a very expensive piece of real estate that we're now committing to that green space piece. So thank you again. And with that, Vice President Walker, I move the resolution in our packet.
Thank you, Ms. Bungiole. And a second by Ms. Newbauer.
If I may, just one clarification. So just so everyone understands, this is not being requested to be purchased as green space. It's requested to be purchased as parkland. And at some point, perhaps, the back portion will be requested to be green space, but this is parkland. There is a subtle distinction within the city code.
Of what we call it, but I think the spirit...
But it will be preserved as open space in perpetuity, 100%.
Yeah, and the message from the residents is loud and clear.
Yes, 100%.
Buy space, leave it undeveloped, keep our city as green as possible. It's another opportunity to do so.
Yes, so we're not giving it to the green space community or committee to have to manage that. That's going to be the job of Mr. Elbert and Mr. Einhaus as part of the normal Parks Department budget. So again, thank you.
But it's protected 10 acres on Rochester Road.
Yes.
Prime real estate.
Assuming you vote yes.
Love it. Thank you, Mr. Elbert. We have a motion and a second, and we have no further questions or public comment on the item. We have a motion by Ms. Bungiole and a second by Ms. Newbauer, and I'll read the resolution into the record, which is quite lengthy. Resolve that the Rochester Hills City Council does hereby accept the terms of the acquisition project agreement, TF23-0003, grant as received from Michigan Department of Natural Resources for the acquisition of 694 South Rochester Road, and that the City Council does hereby specify, specifically agree, but not by the way of limitation, as follows. Number one, to appropriate all funds necessary to complete the project during the project and to provide $1,425,000 to match the grant authorized by the MDNR. Two, to maintain satisfactory financial accounts, documents, and records to make them available to MDNR for auditing at reasonable times. Number three, to acquire the property and provide such funds, services, and materials as may be necessary to satisfy the terms of said agreement. Number four, to regulate the use of the facility constructed and reserved under this agreement to assure that the use thereof by the public on equal and reasonable terms. And number five, to comply with any and all terms of said agreement, including all terms not specifically set forth in the foregoing portions of this resolution. Further resolve that the mayor or his designee is authorized to execute acquisition project agreement, TF23-0003, on behalf of the city. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elbert and Mr. Einhauser. Item 2024-0483, Request for Purchase Authorization, DPS Engineering Contract Blanket Purchase Order for Groundwater Pretreatment and Dewandering for the Sewer Extension along the south side of Hamlin Road near Adams Road in the Project Budget Amount of $615,270 with a 10% Project Contingency in the Amount of $61,527 for a total not-to-exceed project budget amount of $676,797 to Mercino Dewandering LLC, Auburn Hills, Michigan. Tracy?
Good evening again. So I want to try to keep this brief, but this is a part of an overall bigger project. This is, this has to do with the Innovation Hills restroom, which is an amazing project. But in order to construct the restroom, which is currently under design build contracting, we have to extend sanitary sewer. And I believe this summer, you ordered a contract to Superior Excavating of Auburn Hills to construct the sanitary sewer. In the meantime, since the sanitary sewer is being constructed on the south side of Hamlin Road near contaminated site, there was required sampling, and there were some contaminants found on the site. In order to construct the sanitary sewer, dewandering is required. And since there were some contaminants found, the water from the dewandering has to be treated. That's what this contract is for, is for Mercino to treat the water, which you typically don't have to do. They're going to treat the water and discharge it once we receive our permit to the sanitary sewer. One thing that I want to point out that is different than the agenda summary, again, this was kind of, this is, this project's been like several moving pieces to get permits for it to all come together. But the grant will not cover the entire cost of the project. But as we speak, OSTI is already going back to Eagle to request an additional because it was, the amount came in higher than what was originally put in the grant. So they are, this week, planning on submitting a request for additional funds through Eagle. There's also, we're also thinking of ways to construct the sewer a little differently to maybe eliminate one of the locations where we have to do the treatment of the water, where they found contamination. And another item, which is helpful, is Superior Contracting. With their contract, their contractor that does the dewandering for them is Mercino. So the two companies working together will be a benefit too. If there are additional funds needed, we have funds available in the Water and Sewer Capital Project. So if you have any questions, that was kind of a lot of information. But if you have any questions regarding this project, please let me know.
Thank you very much. Is this something we could charge to the $75 million Eagle grant?
So that's part, yeah. So the grant that I, that was stated in the agenda summary that was going to cover this is that.
Right.
But it only covers the treatment, not the dewandering portion. So the whole contract is dewandering and treatment. But they are taking the portion that was approved for treatment. It's still costing more than what they initially put in that grant. And so that's what they're asking for the additional funds, if that makes...
And that's subject to Eagle approval? There's a lot of nuances, what they approve, what they don't approve, how much they approve?
Yeah, and they were confident it would be approved, but they've already, OSTI's already working on it. As of today, we got emails saying that they're already working on it, so.
And they're encouraged that Eagle will approve it?
Yes, they are.
Oh, good, okay.
They are, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice to spend down as much as we can.
Yeah, and I think we will. And plus, with the Superior Contract, you do have some dewandering in that. So like I said, the collaboration between the two contractors, you know, some of the dewandering costs may be in that contract. And so it could be just the treatment cost in this contract. So it's still variable.
Okay.
But worst-case scenario, if we need additional funds to cover some of the costs, they are available in the Water and Sewer Capital Fund.
Thank you very much. So it doesn't look like we have any public comment on this item, and we don't have any council questions. We do have a motion by Mr. Carlock and a second by Ms. Moreland. We have a motion and a second.